Forty-four years. How old is him?
Forty-five.
Why don't we go ahead and holler for any to order? And if we could all stand for a moment of silence and then we'll ask Mr. Mark Showalter to lead us into the place of the flag. A moment of silence. Have I pledged? My pledge to lead is to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right.
Yeah.
I know, right? Put my Ray-Bans in next time.
Okay. No problem.
You're ready to go. Okay, shall we holler over?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Sanes?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Great, we have a whole house. For the first council meeting in three weeks, so have you missed each other?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And how? Each of you should have a copy of the minutes from our last meeting of, oh, May fourteenth.
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
And seconded. If there are no additions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also in your pocket, you should have received the latest check register. Can indicate you received it. Thank you. Public comments?
We've got them all tonight.
The record shows that there were no public comments.
That's a first.
However, Mayor's comments.
Wayo.
There are a couple of those, but not too many. One thing that Eddie Hightower has been really hard at work on is our street list, reviewing all the information that Kyle left him of the x-ray, street condition data that we had. But we're also still focused on the appearance and what we all see. Several of y'all have indicated, have given Eddie names of streets to consider, he's evaluated them and has them on the list. We've added Clay Avenue, which is a kind of a rebuild up there.
Yeah.
It's had drainage problems for some time. But when we look at our budget allocation for this coming year, we have got room to do more streets. So keep your, keep looking and keep talking to constituents and we can add significantly to the list that we have. So just wanted to mention that to you again. Couple of community events that were just home runs that I wanted to mention briefly to the council. Of course, this last weekend was the Horsey One Hundred, where we had all those guests in town. And knock wood, we haven't heard of any accidents during the Horsey One Hundred. We think all of our guests came and had a good time and went home safely. Huge crowd in town.
Yeah.
And we, we had anticipated the weather, which never materialized, so Lori went ahead and moved the party on the square, the opening party on the square, to make it a party on the park. We moved it to Royal Spring Park, where there's the pavilion and they had a tent set up. And I can tell you, it was the best party on the square slash park that I've attended. Everybody I ran into that night said, please move it down here permanently. This is where it needs to be. There were families and children on the grass and we have some parking issues to work out, but I've asked Lori to work with the police department to look at some routes and where we might block to make that work before we make all the big changes to Water Street that we're hiring some engineering help to figure out. So we'll come back to you, but that's a real strong thought right now.
Good.
Just because it went so well. It was a plan B that turned out, it may be our plan A.
A-plus.
Let's see, also, Sunday. DFW post twenty-four, every year does the pilgrimage to all the cemeteries. This past Sunday was the one hundredth pilgrimage.
Oh.
They've done a hundredth year. It's the longest, continuous veteran pilgrimage in the nation.
And didn't they say that they're the only state, county in the nation that does it?
Scott County.
Really?
The only one in the United States that does it, Scott County.
And it was, it was just a breathtaking ceremony.
It was.
They brought in the horse-drawn case sign from Camp Nelson and walked it silently through the event and...
Speaker was good, too.
Mayor, can we do something? I'm sure they probably asked you to speak at one of the, one of the stops along the way, but can we do something as a council to celebrate, to honor and celebrate what they have done for the community of the hundred years and...
You know, that's probably appropriate, Karen. They did ask the judge and me to say a word on behalf of the community, but maybe for our next meeting, a resolution of appreciation.
That'd be really nice.
That's a pretty amazing record.
Yeah, it is.
And the judge and the mayor did a very good job, too. Very good, very complimentary on what y'all said.
When, after the twenty-one gun salute and taps came from somewhere over the hill, he goes...
Then they shot the big cannon off.
Woo! Also, related to veterans, we had an opportunity last week to dedicate the new Veterans Affairs Office that's out at the shopping center beside Enterprise Rent-A-Car. It's where the electrical inspection office used to be. And you all fund, council funds half of that office rent.
Yeah.
County funds the other half. The major general that was there for the ceremony, the thing I wanted to tell the council about is he really praised the city for the council and the courts' effort to make this office available. And unsolicited, he told me that Georgetown has a very good perception with the veteran community and the military community. We wonder how we're doing, but he just kind of said that we're perceived in the way we want to be perceived. And then a coming up event, the Saturday, Lori Saunders is on steroids. That's a joke.
Well, the paper's not here.
Paper's not here. Floating on the Oak Corn is this Saturday.
She was on TV.
See, I saw that interview on thirty-six. If you've got a tube, Public Works was busy building the little launch docks so the people in the tubes can have an easy place to ease into the creek.
Please come see me, I'm at the, by the rock house doing concessions for Friends of the Parks for that event, so come buy a hot dog or hamburger or Coke or something from it.
Take a tube or you can rent a tube. You do need a life vest, so there you go.
Wayo.
Wayo. Okay. And that gets us all the way through Mayor's comments.
Good job.
Easy. And... Had anybody volunteer to help me? I'm delighted for the council's benefit, for the first time, for you all to meet Mr. Chase Esvedo, your new director of Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service.
Right.
So we can't harass Bob anymore.
So we get to harass him?
Well, let's give him, let's give him a couple of meetings, guys, come on.
I say break him in.
I say break him in quick, so now I get to harass Chase.
I tried Chase.
And then, of course, Mr. Mayor's with the, with the budget, so we get, we get two for one tonight without Bob in here. But Chase has got several items that require council's approval, so Chase, I'll turn the, turn the podium over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Georgetown Municipal has three items for your consideration tonight, three purchase orders, and then Alan, I'm going to turn it over to Alan for a presentation of our fiscal year nineteen budget. But first is purchase order to Bluegrass Engineering in the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, and that's for design and construction services relating to sewer improvements at Mallard Point.
Motion, Mayor. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. There are no questions for Chase. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you. Second purchase order is also to Bluegrass Engineering and it's in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars, and that's for, again, design and construction services for a new generator. It's a backup generator at wastewater treatment plant one, and these are important, as we saw last Thursday with the power outage, the critical features of the treatment plant run when the power goes out.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Third purchase order is with CNS Quality Services, in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, and that's for improvements to our Whittaker water storage tank, and that's for pressure washing, paint touch-up, and some insulation repair.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and it looked to me like you got a pretty strong bid on that one.
Yes, sir.
Some people have some money on the table.
Appears so. I like it when that happens.
Aye.
Opposed?
So Mayor, you thought thirty-four thousand was pretty good?
Yeah, the other bids, David, were fifteen, sixty thousand.
Okay.
So it looked like we got a really strong...
I did notice that tower. It seems like underneath is where most of the film or whatever it is. Is that mold or...
I'm not totally sure, but it's every, every tank I've ever seen, it just happens over time and you got to get in there and clean it.
Yeah.
Well, you can hear it.
It's on the outside, the bottom of it.
You can hear them out there.
I know, yeah, I drove by the other day.
So is that an interior and exterior check?
Yes, sir.
I'd hate to be inside cleaning it.
I'd hate, yeah, this is not a job.
Oh.
Okay. Did we vote on all three?
We did.
We did.
Good. Alan?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chase.
Now that Bob's gone, you get me for financial stuff.
That's right, Bob was kind of the financial wheels, wasn't he?
Well, he just kept it after I parted.
He just kept it regardless.
I just let him keep it, I just come and support him. So on behalf of the Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Services Board of Commissioners, we are submitting our, and for your review, consideration, and approval, the operation of capital budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. The Board of Commissioners have approved this budget on May the fifteenth, and our major points is our revenues, our total revenues for, budget revenues for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen are twelve million four hundred nine thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars. That's a three hundred and sixty-two thousand four hundred sixty-six dollar increase from last year, or it's a three percent increase over last year. And our expenses are budgeted at thirteen million thirteen thousand two hundred eighty dollars, which is a three hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine eighty-three increase, which is a two point six seven percent expense increase over last year's budget. That does include the twelve percent hike that we have in retirement. Actually, our health care overall, our group insurance went down because, for the first time in I don't know how many years, our employees are now going to contribute a little bit every paycheck to their, to their health insurance. And with that, and with the different changes we've made, it actually, it decreased about almost seven thousand dollars for the year. So we had a five, five point six percent increase in health insurance and an increase in dental and an increase in vision, but overall, we went down in group insurance with that change that we made.
That's a really good point that Alan's made. We've, we're very proud of the package that our water company employees and our city employees have. But we've discussed before, there's a little variance between those packages, and what Alan and Chase and the board are working with me on is not to harm any employee, but to help us align these benefit packages better over time. So this is a significant step that the water board...
Yeah, the most anybody pays, I think, for a family plan, I think it's like twenty-eight dollars a paycheck.
Wow. We're easing a bit.
Wow.
And we still went, with the increases, we still went down overall.
Doing your job.
We're trying, we're trying to keep costs low. So also, we have capital projects. We have one million five hundred ninety-four thousand dollars in departmental capital projects in our budget, and that'll be funded from our revenue that we generate during the year. We have capital contributions from Toyota that will be three million two hundred eighty-two thousand dollars, and we're doing, we're doing sand filter number one, it's the major project, which is one million seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. We're finishing out the actuator project that they're doing now, and then they're going to start developing the second phase of the sand filters. And what they want to do with that is that'll save them cost over time, but the big, one of their big ticket items is resin that they had to put in there, and that'll save them from having to buy more of that. So it's actually, overall, it'll save them money. We have two vehicle replacements of fifty thousand dollars, but we'll fund that from our savings account, that we, we fund a savings account to pay for vehicles that we purchase. And we also have six million five hundred dollars in the budget with the KIA, city, county, us, for the sewer system to the south. And we have our major product, major capital projects in the budget of four million four hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars for next year, and these will be funded from our capital, capital campaign, our savings account, our line of credits, or whatever we need for that. That'll, it'll cover big ticket items along, like when we finish out our building across our distribution building, our big hole across the street. The second phase of that is in that budget, so we'll finish that out this year as well. And with that...
Just to mention, Alan, on the capital projects, you mentioned of the six and a half million dollar KIA loan. I think that serves as a placeholder right now for what might be a future activity that the board will have to determine and then this council will have to determine. So that's very premature for you all.
Right.
You will hear a lot more about that before you ever have to approve it, but it's a placeholder for now.
We went ahead and did add, and then as a line add them for, in case it happens.
So bottom line for this next fiscal year, no talk of increase in water rates or sewer rates.
Correct.
Very good. Then you have a motion if we're going to do it tonight.
There you go.
There you go. Hey, before we approve it, if you go to the back of their budget document, the last four or five pages are just some fascinating charts that show growth of the system, water system, water customer growth from ninety-five to two thousand and nineteen. It goes from six thousand customers to fourteen thousand customers.
Blew me away.
And the sewer growth is even greater. It goes from forty-three hundred customers to fourteen thousand customers.
Yeah.
But what's even more remarkable, the next page, they've got a chart that shows the number of customers served per employee. And their employee line across the bottom is almost flat. They've only increased from forty-four to fifty-nine employees in, over all those years. In nineteen ninety-five, they served an average of a hundred and thirty-eight customers per employee, and today it's two hundred and thirty-eight customers per employee. Technology, efficiency, very impressive.
Good workers.
Yeah.
Well managed.
Mayor, I put a second on Karen's motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions for Alan or Chase?
Good job.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
That one's so hard, wasn't it, Chase?
Now, I saw him just shake his hand. Don't think every meeting's like this now.
Well, actually, actually for the water company, they have been last year or so.
They've been really efficient since I've been here. Their voice's been easy.
Item eight on your agenda under, under, oh, I'm sorry, let's see. No, that's right.
City engineer.
Item eight under city engineer, municipal order approving the East Main Street Improvement conceptual design. We kind of highlighted this, this very recent issue that we're going to, we're going to respond quickly to, but we know the first step is to understand traffic counts and have a rough concept of what we need to engineer and then price out. So this is a municipal order approving an eleven thousand dollar contract, I believe, with integrated engineering to get us this quick start so we can begin this process and move forward.
That's amazing.
Thank you. Second? Second? Thank you, Mark. And if there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Stacy's here.
She is.
We have first reading of the budget ordinance, and just, just again, before we actually do the budget summary, I want to acknowledge to the council that we were very conservative about new positions this year. And we're sensitive to the fact that police and fire ask for positions, but we've taken a conservative approach. We do think that at the mid-year budget amendment, that we'll make a very strong effort to address some of their requests then. But out of an abundance of caution, we're just not quite ready to do it at this point in the budget year. So with that said, we can answer questions or we can get the summary read and a motion in a second and then take whatever questions might be.
I want a motion, I think.
Oh, that's right.
We just read, you're in a hurry, Tom.
We're not passing it tonight.
Shucks, he says.
Order of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal period July one, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Summary, section one adopts by incorporated exhibit the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Government funds. Prior year revenues, nine million five hundred sixty thousand seven hundred fifty-four. Revenues, municipal taxation, two million two hundred seventy thousand. Licenses and permits, twenty-one million seven hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred. Funds and forfeitures, ninety-four thousand. Intergovernmental revenues, fourteen thousand, fourteen million six hundred thirty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-five. Charges for service, one hundred and ninety-three thousand eighty-two. Other revenue, thirty-one thousand seven hundred. Other financing sources, transfers, nine million four hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty-five. Total city revenues, forty-eight million three hundred ninety-nine thousand eighty-two. Expenditures, general government, one million five hundred and twenty thousand six hundred. City council, one hundred ninety-four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven. City clerk, two hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and thirteen. Police, six million seven hundred and ninety-three, six fifty-three. Public works, two million four hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen. Fire, five million five hundred and ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-four. Code enforcement, two hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and eleven. Building inspection, five hundred and one thousand six hundred and thirty-six. Dispatch to health communications, one million six hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and seventy-seven. Utilities, seven hundred and eight thousand four hundred. Community services, interlocal, five million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-eight. Capital outlay, twenty million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and forty-eight. Debt service, one million forty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-five. Transfer to other funds, ten million three hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars. Total city expenditures, fifty-seven million nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-six. Proprietary funds. Prior year revenues, two hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. Revenues, sanitation, two million fifty thousand. Recycling, thirty-three thousand. Cemetery, two hundred and ten thousand. Intergovernmental revenue, four hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and twelve. Other revenue, six thousand. Other financing sources and transfers, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand two hundred and seventy-two. Total proprietary revenues, three million six hundred and eleven dollars and one hundred and eighty-four. Expenditure, sanitation, two million twenty-two, two eighty-three. Recycling, five hundred and two thousand ninety-two. Stormwater, seven hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty-six. Landfill, seventy-six thousand. Cemetery, five hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-two. Total proprietary expenditures, three million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-three. Section two, authorizes the mayor accept as provided in the Georgetown Purchasing Policy adopted in municipal order eleven twenty-eight to enter into any contracts or agreements necessary to fulfill the operation of city government within the allocations listed in this ordinance. Section three, provides that if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such information shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section four, provides that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, one hundred Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, four oh three two four. Public address and road for the first time, June fourth, twenty eighteen.
Thank you. That will constitute first reading. Stacy's here, if there are any questions, or if over the next three weeks, one week?
One week.
One week.
It's eleventh.
Next week.
That we do it.
We do it next Monday.
Are we reading for the second time?
On the eleventh.
No.
We had a second reading scheduled for that first meeting in case...
Yeah, that's why we had this one tonight.
Yeah, that's why we had this one.
Okay, good.
So we're, yeah, the last one.
I thought it was a little window there.
Yeah.
Give it a little break.
All right. Any questions at all?
I do. I have a question. On the, at the end of the last meeting, you brought up the road.
Yes.
That we were going to have to be responsible for the road, and that's going to come into this budget.
Yes.
How have you decided to handle it with this budget?
I don't know exactly, yet.
What was the number you gave us the other day?
The number we gave, the number that Mark Reed provided me was seven hundred and twenty-six thousand. And that did not include utility relocation or right-of-way acquisition.
So you're talking a million dollars?
Well, what, what we're going to learn from this engineering study, Karen, Mark had priced, based on his own observations, a full four lane width, the entire length of the improved area.
So are we getting help from the school system or from, are we going to get help from anybody with this?
We don't know yet.
We should.
What I can tell you is, when I sat there with Dr. Hub and went over that estimate and we talked about what Mark had recommended, Mark Reed, again, this was just a courtesy estimate for us to work with. He projected a full fifty-foot wide, the road's currently twenty-two feet wide. He recommended a fifty-foot wide four-lane improvement. What Dr. Hub and his architects had talked to District Seven about is a turn lane, improving the two lanes and a turn lane, but something far, far less than what Mark Reed had estimated. So I don't have, I think what Mark has estimated is probably far more than what's going to be required to get this done. This preliminary engineering study is going to help us with that. I don't think that we should have to pay all of that.
No.
Not at all. I don't think so either.
The school, corporation, or the state, or the county, or somebody has to help us fund this.
They do, without a doubt.
Now, Richard, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but this is all tied together in a big ball. Because we've been concerned about the need to improve the road and how we might pay for it, Richard Hamilton was in Washington last week and came back pretty excited and talking to me about the possibility of something called a build grant. Through the Department of Labor. It is a, a remnant or a descendant of the old Tiger Grants that we used to hear about for major highway projects for big cities. They've got this build grant, which is supposed to be a little more adaptable for rural communities, so we don't have to ask for fifty million dollars. We can do something that fits us. Richard was thinking in terms of our East Main Street extension project might be a good fit for that grant, but Andrew and Devin have pulled up the guidelines and have looked at them pretty carefully, and the benefit of the East Main extended project, it's limited in that it's the school and the people traveling to the school. What this grant, in terms of the scoring it's looking for, is more widespread impact on public safety and economic impact and other benefits to the region. So the internal discussion that we've had and we've just about settled on is, I think I'm going to tell our staff to clear the decks and spend the next five weeks putting together a build grant for about six to seven million dollars. And what we, because we want, if, we can find a way to fund that with various partners. What we need help on is fixing Old Oxford Pike correctly. Making it a real road, taking out the roller coaster and making it more flat, and building the extension to Lexus Way. That's what we want to aggressively... That's what we wanna aggressively go after. This money is, they're gonna decide about this money by.
It's due July 19.
July 19. We have to have our application ready.
Decision must be made by December 21.
See you by the end of the year.
So we're, we're looking at probably asking to hire an engineering company to help us with the, with, to put together the biggest grant that we've ever sought.
Yeah.
So we are thinking about East Main Street Extended, but we're really excited about this other opportunity. I think we can do this study that you've just approved to get how big we need to do East Main Street and then talk about how do we fund what we know, rather than this wild estimate that we have today.
Okay. I was just gonna make a suggestion on changing one item in the budget to, it would do half of the initial, but not half of what it's gonna cost, but is to take out the plans, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that not what you had in for the plans for the building?
For the architect?
Mm-hmm.
It was actually a placeholder of three fifty.
Take that out and replace, replace that money as part of the road money was my, was gonna be my suggestion. That's just a suggestion. But I assume if it's gonna be a million plus, you're gonna end up taking that out of reserves. If you're gonna go after a grant for the rest of it, you'll probably take that out of the reserves.
Unless, unless there's a reasonable engineering solution that improves two lanes and adds a center lane, which reduces the cost a bunch. And if we can get some partners on it, then maybe we're, maybe it's something we can say grace over in a mid-year budget amendment. Those are the things I'm kinda hoping for. I know that that road is not yet budgeted, but I do think we've got enough open-ended possibilities and with the mid-year budget amendment that we can get it budgeted. School won't open until late 19, or the school year for 19, so.
So it's a two-budget cycle for the road, is that right?
Yeah, you'll have another year before.
We'd have at least two budget cycles.
Yeah.
And the school won't open until school starts in 19. So for now, I'd, I'd rather not make that change.
Because it could be a significant change?
But.
It could be.
But keep it in mind and, and then we'll report back to you as this unfolds.
Just because we're talking, we're talking about that road, the, doing that road and doing a, just a turn lane, if we're gonna do it, we might as well just do it right.
Yeah.
Because I hate to spend the extra money if it all falls back on the city to spend that money, but on the flip side of it, those two subdivisions that are behind them, they only have one other access out onto, and that is the far subdivision, Richfield, well, I guess they do, they can come out on, well, they have both that go out on Lemons Mill. Well, that's a terrible road, too. So at school traffic, if you think of how bad it is out here at Ann Mason.
It's gonna be tough.
And during that time.
Champion White.
Yeah, it's awful out there, and that's a big road.
Yeah.
So if you put two and a half lanes or two lanes and a turn lane over here, you're gonna have chaos over there.
Well, I'm not, and again, I'm not.
You're waiting for the report, yeah.
Calling for that. I'm saying, let's do a report, because I got people saying we need a four-lane highway and I got people saying we need a turn lane. And I'd like to help somebody, have somebody help me figure out what we really need to do it well.
I have a feeling we need.
Agreed.
A need big.
Well, we all agree the safety of those kids is very important and it can't go the way it is now. You can't open school without the road open.
We, I think we hundred percent agree on that.
Yeah.
And how we can live with.
Yeah.
How soon to the, how soon till, till the report will come back?
It's gonna give it at least two months. I don't, there's not a, there's not a deadline on it, so.
Okay.
They're gonna, they're gonna want time to do traffic studies.
Yeah.
And they're gonna, you have to do, they're probably to get costs, they're gonna probably have to look at right-of-way issues and things like that, because it's a lot of research.
Utility location is gonna be a part of that project. I think we'll be able to have a better conversation once we get that in hand. Mark, do you have a question?
Just for clarification purposes, is the, is our, our intent at the present time to not make those changes until the spring or summer of next year?
I think, I think we'll, we'll, we'll make them as soon as we get enough information to make the decisions.
But it could, that could be as early as late summer, early fall this year, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think when we get that engineering report back and we start, I think these conversations will begin in earnest and we'll have an idea. This council will decide what they're gonna do long before next year.
Thank you, District Seven, with anything?
I don't think we can wait, Mark. I think as, as information is, even though the school won't open till 19, as we get the information we're seeking, we need to bring it to the council and talk about it.
Oh, you'll take that long.
You can't just put a little.
Really do major changes out there. It'll take that long to get it done.
Yeah.
The roads and the school may come side by side.
Yeah.
That's it, Mayor.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
This one shouldn't be too hard. Chief Ward?
Mayor of council, request that you accept a grant offered to us by Norfolk Southern. It's a thousand dollars and it'll be used to purchase ten technical rescue helmets.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No match required. It gets easy, doesn't it, Chief?
No brainer on that one.
Thank you. Anything else, Chief?
That's it.
All right.
Let's see, under the police department, we have, we have a municipal order approving the purchase of vehicles. And here's what we're working on there. The, the last date that they can order current model year vehicles is gonna cut off before July 1st. We have budgeted for these vehicles in the July 1st budget, but I'm not willing to, we, by resolution, we're asking the council to approve us going ahead and ordering these, subject to paying for them in the upcoming budget. Correct, Andrew?
And you may be able to help us understand that this ordering timeline that.
Yes, the way I understand it, sir, is if it's not ordered before the second reading of the, of the city ordinance or the, the budget ordinance.
Or June 30, right? Is it June 30?
Actually, no, the model year cutoff is this week.
Okay.
Motion, Mayor. Motion second.
There you go. Okay. That did it.
That pushes it until.
Yeah.
February.
They would get the vehicles in the fall instead of February, March of this year.
We're voting for it now, but it's not coming until the next budget anyway.
Right. We just gotta be able to order them now.
You're kind of committing to keeping these cars in the budget if you approve this municipal order.
I'm asking you permission to do it ahead of time.
You got it already.
You got it, I'll send a second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
There you go, Stacy.
Mayor, I got another question.
Yes, sir.
I know David has brought this up several times. Are we still looking at somewhere in the foreseeable future with the Highlander?
We are. There, we're actually getting, we're actually gonna get, we're scratching this itch slowly, but we are scratching it. We're actually gonna get sixteen vehicles this year. There's gonna be fifteen of these sport utility interceptors and one Highlander. And the Highlander will be used as a administrative vehicle. The Ford SUV interceptors truly are built as police cars.
Yeah.
And if you'll read the specs that are behind this, they're heavy-duty wiring harnesses and eighteen-inch wheels and they're fully bad-to-the-bone police cars.
They look bad to the bone.
The Highlander is probably a nicer vehicle and we were actually, they felt out the men, we were a little worried about, believe it or not, getting pushback from some of the officers if police administration were driving what was perceived to be nicer SUVs than we were given the officers. But we are gonna, Chief Swanigan's gonna drive a Highlander and, but these are.
David wants a Lexus that's made here.
Oh. David, you can buy one. Tom, you can do it.
I think for the police chief to drive.
No, I really thought when they gave the mayor and the judge a car, it should've been the ES350. Didn't feel like I could complain about the car.
And Mayor, just if you don't mind, I'll add to that, that we have some other departments getting Toyotas.
Oh, we do?
Robert Bruin, this past year, got a Tundra.
Yeah.
For his public works vehicle, and then I think we have at least one other department or two that may be ordering SUVs next year, so they may choose the Highlander.
Well, the, and the thing is, they aren't specifically the models that we make here in Georgetown, but we're supporting the nameplate.
That's what we need to do.
Yeah, yeah.
And the enterprise contract has allowed us to buy more Toyotas, because we're not limited state bidding.
Good.
Thank you, Stacy. I need all the help I can get.
Yeah.
Let's see, under Public Works, Robert would like to buy a bunch of salt.
Hope you don't.
Buy, this is just in case.
Just in case.
In case.
We don't want to buy any personal.
Me, too.
You will.
You will.
And what's, in a, in a, in a display of pinpoint bidding, Robert budgeted a hundred thousand and the bid came in at ninety-eight thousand, four hundred.
Yep.
Salt has gone through the roof.
Whoa.
It went up.
It's the morning weather.
Twenty-nine dollars a ton, it went up.
Twenty-nine dollars a ton.
They said, we, excuse me, we bid it through that KLC, CAKO grant.
Reverse auction.
I mean, a bid, reverse auction, yeah. And what they sent out after the auction, there was a lot of questions why it went up. I mean, I got one bid for a hundred and forty-eight dollars a ton.
Hmm.
Luckily, that one won, but they said because of the bad winter everywhere, especially up northeast.
Yeah.
They have to get, they don't have as much reserves.
They gotta dig deeper.
They gotta dig it up.
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How does the reverse auction work? We put the bid out and then the companies kinda bid down trying to.
The, the League of Cities and the CAKO, CAKO actually, I think, runs it and then League of Cities just joins them. But they put it out and they bid on it over the internet.
Basically like eBay, except you're lowering the price.
It goes down.
Yeah.
You know, somebody can bid and then they can rebid.
It's exactly what it is, electronically. And it's worked beautifully.
We don't have to, all we have to do.
It works on commodities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They tried it on some other things, but on commodities, it worked perfect.
But all we have to do is, Trace has to put an ad in the paper, you know, like we normally do.
Yeah.
Other than that, we don't have to do anything. They sent us the paperwork, the only, the only thing we have to do is have it, have you approve it by, before thirty days, which I got, this week, I gotta let them know whether you approve it or not.
There you go.
And Chief, we keep some in supply over on Jackson Street.
Oh, yeah, we, we're full.
Yeah.
Me and Stacy even talked about it. If I had a place to put some, I would've bought some more at last year's price, but we're full.
We're gonna store it.
We bought, normally we've been bidding the twelve hundred tons a year for the last two years I've been here. We used, the first year I was here, we used, we bought about a thousand, but we actually get the secondary storage place at the county.
Yeah.
The old county garage. So we bought a little bit more than what we used, but this year, we used thirteen hundred tons.
This is a rough, rough year, not a lot of heavy snow, but a lot of different snow.
Just little snow, you know.
Have to get them.
There was a couple snows if we'd have done nothing, four or five hours had been away.
Yeah.
Been, went away.
Once you don't know that, though.
But we can't do that. We gotta put salt down, you know, act and stuff.
Eighty-two dollars a ton, it sure did shoot up.
Yep.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. That's it. We are at council comments.
Ooh.
Forty-five minutes.
Shoot, wait.
Well.
Our fifteen minute, our fifteen minutes is in your hands.
Who had a bet?
Yeah.
All right, who was gonna win this one tonight?
Not me.
I said an hour or less. Andrew said an hour and twenty minutes.
Andrew, you've lost. You've lost.
I'll tell you who lost.
I lost a big time.
What'd you say, two hours?
Really?
Don't bet with these men, you'll lose every time.
I haven't lost every time.
No, she rarely loses. Mark, can we start with you tonight?
Okay, thank you.
Quickly. Thank you. Oh, oh, Mark, I finally did.
It's getting longer now.
Excuse me, but I went back through my notes and Eddie and I sat down today and we identified the area that you've asked me to look at twice, fences in backyards.
Okay.
And we got it geographically fixed in our mind now, so Eddie's told me today, he's gonna look. It just clicked that we.
I don't have anything.
You're good?
Not tonight.
Here?
I'm sending you pictures, so we're good.
David?
Mayor, two things real quick, this one's gonna take long. The cemetery does look good. I was up there this past week, right after the event, and one of the things that I've learned a little bit about is honeysuckle.
Oh, beautiful stuff.
And, well, it's beautiful, but it's not a native species and it's growing everywhere.
It's a nightmare.
It's almost like kudzu.
It is.
Oh, I hate it.
Smells wonderful.
It does.
It's attractive.
It's very.
It's a weed.
If it starts, it's gone.
So anyway, I know, I know that there's some folks out there that are trying to eradicate it, they'll cut it, and then when it starts to grow in spring, they'll spray it. But we've got some in the cemetery. And I, it's just there, you know, it, I guess some people think it's a plant or whatever, and the cemetery's beautiful and I'm not being critical at all, but I do think that it would be good to get rid of it on some of the properties that we have. And Chief, Bruin, you might know more about it than, than we do, certainly. But it is, it's unbelievable, hell, it's taken over the countryside.
It spreads by the birds.
Yeah. Um, yeah. I have one more. I'll come, come back.
And since you, when you brought up the cemetery, we did receive a whole bunch of engineering drawings and elevations of the front of the cemetery and calculations, and I can't understand anything they sent me.
Except the price.
I've asked Eddie to interpret what they have sent me and also I'm hopeful that by the 11th, we can have some renderings.
Good.
I can cover you up with engineering data today, but I can't give you a picture of what it's gonna look like.
Well, we've said a picture's worth a thousand words, so.
Well, I told them we aren't gonna do the job until we see a picture.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
And then, Mayor, I did think the other item was the, the light poles that they've put up out on Oxford Drive, and I know you and Andrew are kind of aware of that, and I don't mind to give you a call later, you might not want to talk about it right now, but is there any new news on that? Or you may touch base with you all later this week, I'll be glad to.
I mean, we need, we just need to dig into it, but we agree with you that it's not right.
Those are massive wood posts right adjacent to the red.
I mean, within three feet in many cases.
Dangerous.
And it's not what we, any of us envisioned.
I'm, I'm surprised at how, I'd like to know how it got that way because usually KU won't do that.
Yeah.
They won't put it on hold back. They don't want their poles to get it either.
Well, in, in all sincerity, I think when we all voted on it, that we were envisioning nice-looking.
Metal.
Metal, black, white poles on the four corners around the intersection. I, I just didn't envision the.
That's what we envisioned where we.
Yeah. So anyway.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, good deal. That's it.
Martin?
The alley that we closed here a few weeks ago over.
On the two sheets?
Yeah. In between Chestnut and the other one, I had a lady complaining about water. I think her address is 505, just kind of looked at that.
505 Chestnut?
Yeah, it's on this side, that would be Chestnut, right, on this end.